Welcome to the regular school board meeting of the St. Peter's School Board. It is Thursday, January 20th, 2022. We are in the governor's room of the St. Peter's Community Center. It is 6:30 and I call this meeting to order. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. We would entertain a motion to consider and adopt the agenda?
Two, two seconds.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Anyone who would like to speak to an agenda item? Sarah, do we have any cards? Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak to an agenda item? All right. If you do, please fill out a card and give to Sarah. Move on to approval of consent agenda items. Does anybody have any questions? It's been our practice to not read through the consent agenda, but if there are items that we want to pull out or recognize or ask questions about, we certainly can do that.
Just a minor detail possibly, but I noticed that the minutes for December were signed by Charlie as clerk, but he wasn't even on the board in December, so does that make a difference?
He's signing them when you're...
But we approve, yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Good catch.
Yeah, I just wanted to make note that we had several donations that were included in the consent agenda from the Rotary Group, the Ambassador's Group. A donor who chose to remain anonymous who donated a bunch of equipment and another from Mrs. Sylvester. And we thank them for their generosity.
Absolutely. That's amazing. That's...I think there were some donations last month as well and just really appreciate and heartened by the support of the community to the district, so thank you.
Chair Leonard?
Yes?
I'd like to just notice that we are accepting the resignation of the coordinator of the Office of Education Equity, Afi Sagat, who I think has done a fabulous job in what we've expected him to do over the past year and a half, two years, and it's been a difficult time, so I just want to acknowledge his work that he's done for the district.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, just a brief overview came in as a liaison and is moving on to another position in another community as the coordinator of the Office of Educational Equity. And I think that speaks well to the program he built and appreciate the support of the administration and the superintendent and the district for supporting that office, creating the cultural center, and wish Afi the best and we will miss him, but I'm excited for the next person to take on that work. Thank you, Chair Leonard.
Chair Leonard, we have two graduates. Would you like to...
Yes, please.
We also have two graduates who have met all of the requirements, not only of the state of Minnesota, but from the St. Peter's Public Schools as well. So congratulations to Jacob Larson and Ryan Fredericks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other items? Would anyone make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We'll move on to the student spotlight. Principal Engeldinger?
Yes, thank you for inviting the high school to provide a student spotlight. We have Bryn Anderson here today. Usually when it's the high school's turn, I like to highlight a program or a project. If you remember, there were some young men here who had refinished, refurbished an old tractor. So this month, I asked Ms. Lilienthal, our egg science instructor, if she could point to a student who would do a great job talking about some of the projects that they've been doing in one of their classes last fall. So Bryn is representing the first semester Plants, Animals, Pizza, and You class, but she's also apparently been turned on to Ms. Lilienthal's programs and is in another, I think, animal science class with her this semester. And so I really wanted them to highlight the program as well as Bryn's work in there. So they've been doing some, they did some pretty cool stuff with the greenhouse and hydroponics, so I'll let you tell more about it. Yes, so... Ms. Lilienthal is sick tonight, so she would be here too.
So like Ms. Engeldinger said, my name is Bryn Anderson and I was a part of Ms. Lilienthal's PPLA agricultural class. And some of the work we did in there was planting some vegetables and beans and stuff like that that we grew with all the other students, as well as our hydroponics project, which is where we planted some lettuce without soil and did that as a project and eventually sold it to the colop in town. So, yeah.
Yeah, that was the reason that I thought about moving this project forward because it was another strong partnership with a community partner and the kids worked really hard. We've been actually enjoying some of their produce in the school cafeteria. And I apologize, Ms. Lilienthal said there were tomatoes to hand out, the last of the tomatoes to hand out to the board, but I was worried somebody might throw them, I guess. Do you guys have any questions for Bryn?
Bryn, what's been the most fun part of the egg classes you've taken?
I think a lot of being able to do the projects ourselves and having a lot of hands-on work was very fun to experience.
Awesome. Thanks.
So Bryn, in hydroponics, are you, are there fish involved or is it just water?
Nope. We just have water. We set up little buckets, kind of, like little tubs, and we fill them with water and then we oxidate the water, feeding in like oxygen through a tube, and have a little carrier, little cup, that we put some seeds in as well as some like spongy material, and it just grows the roots through water instead of soil.
Amazing.
We have talked a little bit with Ms. Lilienthal about putting in some permanent hydroponics spots underground where the orchard is eventually coming, but there's still a lot of space there, so we're talking about doing some of that stuff too. Very cool.
I took an egg science class too and I really liked it. And so it was really cool to go in the greenhouse and see what you guys are up to.
Yeah.
We took care of the tortoise.
Oh, yeah. He was an interesting addition to the class.
I don't know I knew about the tortoise until tonight. No, I love it.
Yeah, I love to visit him.
That's great.
So is, am I correct in thinking that that's an elective that you signed up for first?
Yes, it is an elective that I signed up for.
Great. Could you, I know we've been talking about electives. From a student perspective, what did that opportunity mean to you and what are you looking for in electives?
So electives, I'm pretty much looking for just what I'm interested in and how the school is able to provide an education specifically that I want for my future career. And so with animal sciences and agricultural class, I was able to find that.
Great. Excellent answer.
Is that what your future career will be?
Yes. So I want to be a zoology veterinarian. So animal sciences and agricultural class was really important to me.
Excellent.
It was not that well spoken about when I was a sophomore. I was only a sophomore. I don't know that I mentioned that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student council report. Eva?
The student council doesn't have much to report on, but we finished up kind of our holiday activities. And the seniors did win the decoration contest, so we got to play games for like 45 minutes one day, which I thought the prize would be bigger, honestly. But then tomorrow morning, we have our student council meeting and we're going to talk about Snow Week, which is coming up, I think, in February. And so we're going to kind of talk about how to introduce the Snow Week court and have the seniors vote on that. And we'll talk about decorations and just activities to do kind of throughout the week and additionally the dress-up days. So I think that will all be decided tomorrow. It would be better if the meeting was today because then I could tell you everything, but it's tomorrow morning. So that's kind of that, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Questions? All right. Well, thank you. And as always, I know you're super busy, so there's zero judgment if you get on then and do leave the meeting. You're also welcome to stay. We will move on to our action items, and we are here to consider approval of high school and middle school course program changes for '22, '23, and Principals Graff and Engeldinger will lead us. Some pretty exciting stuff we're going to hear about tonight.
I know. I'm really busy jumping up and down tonight. Do you want me to go first with the high school offerings? That was a great question that you brought to Ms. Anderson because most of the courses that we have, that we bring forward each year are elective opportunities for kids. Some you'll see on here, Mr. Potts, have been pre-approved by a school board probably like 60 years ago, but we wanted, we always want to keep the board apprised of any new offerings. Most of these are pretty much a change in title because we have new, different teachers teaching a course. If you take note of those CTE offerings, Scott Robinson replaced Warren Peterson, who had a PLTW background and training. So we're keeping our engineering courses and our woodworking courses, but they're just changing slightly to adjust to the new teachers' qualifications. We're really excited about the growth in our Health Science Academy. If you guys recall, we had, we started the Health Science Academy in partnership with the Service Cooperative, and they provided teacher, they provided guests, they provided curriculum at a cost per student to the school, but it was a great way to start, get that program started. Two years ago, our numbers during the process skyrocketed. They doubled.
That was the number going up.
Was that you?
Sound effects for the media.
The enrollment doubled and we had an opportunity to hire our own health science teacher and we partnered with TCU on that. We needed a .67 health science instructor. They needed .33. It was a perfect thing. It happened again last year. Yep, well timed. It happened again last year. And so now we have Dr. Christopher Harms teaching on an overload this year. It's great. It certainly, hopefully is inspiring kids to perhaps pursue a career in the health sciences. It's certainly a need in the community. So that's one we're really excited about, that first one, chemistry for the health sciences. That would also, if it's a student who is in that track, that would also fulfill the standards in the regular chemistry class as well. And that's also a concurrent course offered through South Central College. You'll see creative writing offered with the English department as well as publications. Who knew that would have ever gone away in the first place? But we're looking forward to having more student publications and students involved in the production of the yearbook again. So we'll see. When kids register, they vote with what they register for, so hopefully these will all be a go.
Great. Questions?
So the courses here have, there's been an indicated interest in those. Now, are there any courses that currently exist that are going to suffer so that they may not be offered?
That's a really good point because we have, we've come to the point at the new high school that we're really flush with elective opportunities. So yeah, there may be.
I know I've heard in past years on the board, and I think you've been the one to say this, but students vote with their feet, and so they're registering for the things that are interesting then. And we heard from Bryn that, you know, that's important to her and being able to choose things that she's interested in. And so while things might cycle out, new things cycle in, and it's really a way to hone in on that student interest.
Yeah. We have also gotten better at, some courses aren't offered every year. We'll do them on, gives kids an opportunity once to take a class. Our science department is a great example of this. They have a lot of interests, and so they're always wanting to add, to add elective opportunities. So we have figured out which, in which years we offer which courses, which hopefully helps keep some of these around too.
So when is registration?
February.
In science in particular, you said there's a lot of interest in electives among the faculty and the students. I would assume the block schedule is maybe not perfect everywhere, but it seems friendly to the sciences and might create new opportunities for things because of the time they have available.
Absolutely.
Other questions? I think you're looking for a motion to approve these changes. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
Mine might not be as exciting. We have two proposed changes at the middle school. The first one involves the proposal to consolidate our STEM and science classes in the fifth and sixth grade. Those courses currently run on a quarter rotation, so our fifth and sixth graders will go through a quarter of STEM, a quarter of science, a quarter of social studies, and a quarter of art. With the implementation of the new science standards, the way the standards are written, those design and engineering components or those standards are within the core concept standards. The old ones were written separately, so many schools tackled them by creating a separate STEM course. The new ones, they're combined. So we feel that by combining those two courses and making a semester-long science course that includes those design and engineering standards, we'll be better able to meet those standards. And then the second proposal is the creation of a new exploratory elective offering. If you remember, our seventh and eighth graders have a six-week rotation for their exploratories, and they rotate through four core exploratories, and then the last two exploratory rotations are elective courses. And every couple of years, we renew those. And the one that we are proposing for this year is a new health exploratory elective offering, and it's called Critical Thinking in Health. And it's designed to be a critical thinking course which surrounds health-related topics.
So the science and STEM, mashing that together for a semester, who handles teaching? I mean, right, because STEM is sort of a separate right now thing. Who teaches, who's going to teach that? Are they going to co-teach it?
And there's some big benefits to this. So right now, Megan Gaber teaches both fifth and sixth grade science, and she's not on an island. She's the only one that teaches that content. Jason Tupence teaches STEM, and he's on an island. So by bringing those two together and creating the STEM course or the STEM science course, they will both teach fifth grade science for a semester and both teach sixth grade science for a semester. So we'll have a true professional learning community being built by that. Both have the appropriate licensure.
Cool. Thank you.
I'm excited that middle school students can be introduced to those health concepts and potentially go into health at the high school level if they want to, but this isn't a prerequisite or anything. It's just an opportunity to be exposed to that a little sooner if they figure that out.
Yep. Yeah. With the idea of those elective exploratories are really an opportunity for kids to just kind of dive into an area they're interested in so that they can make more informed decisions when they go to the high school.
Thank you. Any other questions? Now, now would be it.
I still move that we, the high school, middle school course program changes for '22, '23 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Harry Nunn, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Approval of the '22, '23 and '23, '24 school calendar with the caveat that things can change if they need to.
Right. Yes. It is, it has been past practice to adopt two years at a time. And so this year before we started, we brought together a group of, I think it was about 40 people it ended up being, that included teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, parents, community members, and we had a really good conversation about what were preferences and priorities when looking at school calendars. And there were a lot of good conversations around long breaks or short breaks, or is it better to have several short breaks throughout the year or one long break, and holidays and beginning of year and end of year and all kinds of things. And we came out with a list of priorities. And before we left, we broke into small groups, and each small group tried their hand at developing a draft calendar. Well, none of those calendars incorporated everything that needed to be in a calendar. It did give us a lot of smaller pieces that we could look at as what people preferred or the priorities that they were putting in calendars. So from there, we created some drafts, and then the admin team got together and looked over it, made a few changes. We brought in union leadership and they looked at it and made a few changes, and we kept working on it and working on it. And these are what we came up with. I think a few significant differences is the inclusion of Eid as a holiday. And we learned quite a bit about Eid as we were working through this. It actually falls in one of two days and is not determined until the moon rises that night to know if it's, which day it's going to fall on. So the '22, '23 calendar, it happens to fall on either a Friday or a Saturday. And on the '23, '24 calendar, it falls on either a Tuesday or a Wednesday, which is April 9th or 10th. And so we tried to adjust our days off to account for that and without creating a Monday in between, in between there. So we kind of created a smaller spring break there. The other significant piece is where Memorial Day happens to fall on these calendars. Specifically on the '23, '24 calendar, it's a very early Memorial Day on May 27th, and there were not enough days between Labor Day and Memorial Day to get all of our contract days in or our school days in. And so graduation is actually scheduled for May 31st in '23, '24, which is four days after Memorial Day. And then in '22, '23, it is scheduled for June 2nd for the same reason. We just wouldn't have enough days. So I think those are the two major differences. Both calendars also include two full staff development days. That is something that our staff was really hoping for, an opportunity to take some dig d- dig dives, deep dives into data on those days or some practices that we're looking at. And so there's one scheduled in September and one in February on each of these calendars. And I think those are the major differences. Any questions or anyone on the committee want to add anything?
Kind of covered it.
Just to clarify, when is graduation for '22, '23?
June 2nd.
No, I think kind of like we talked about with, everybody likes different things with the calendar. Like if I were to make a school calendar, it would look different. For me personally, I enjoy, like different things. So I think that's just, people have to kind of keep that in mind. Like you're never going to have a calendar that probably is 100% your number one choice, nor is this calendar maybe all of ours 100%. You know what I mean? It's just, you kind of got to weigh it out. And some people like before Labor Day, some people like before Memorial Day, some people don't. I say keep them all summer. You know what I mean?
I think that was, everyone agreed to that. That was in the group, but students kind of pushed back on that a little bit.
That's a great point, Teresa. Thank you.
So with the block scheduling, we have semester courses then, right? And in the senior high, I noticed there's, especially '23, '24, a four-day difference between how long the semesters are. And to me, that becomes kind of a significant number of days as far as depending on the courses, what the students are going to lose out on. '22, '23 is a three-day deal. And taking a look at that, I was just wondering, could you end the second quarter on the 13th, the Friday, and have the workday following what's probably Martin Luther King's birthday on the 17th? And now your semesters would be 87 and 88 days. And I don't, you know, it's a little more difficult, I think, looking at the '23, '24. And I noticed that we're starting before Labor Day in both of them. And I know there are statute qualifications. So what are we using for '23, '24?
The standard is to have $400,000 in construction costs, and we need that in both of these years.
So we've already planned $400,000 worth of construction in the summer of '23?
Yes, it's part of our, you know, with our LTFM, we have a 10-year plan, so we know. we know what's booked out.
And I think if I'm correct in remembering, uh, we have to meet that standard and then we have to apply for the waiver from the state, um, in the state. I, I've always heard that they've, they've never denied one of those if you meet the construction threshold, uh, but, but that's something we have to do. So that would again confirm our ability to start early.
And they did change that process slightly this year. It used to be that you had to send a hard copy of a letter to the commissioner and now it's on the state website and really is a two question. You know, what is your district and do you have this much in construction? And.
Welcome to twenty-three.
Um, the, the, uh, the piece about the length of the, um, semesters on either side, um, we had looked at really going on evening those out, like trying to be perfect with that. One of the things that came out during our session with, um, the parents and the community members specifically was around MLK week because the way that it falls, it's very often that MLK day is on Friday and the exact middle of the, um, year would be that Friday. And so we're not in school on Monday and they came to school for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then they were out Friday. And so they were hoping to make that a, you know, and your suggestion would do that. It shifts everything by a day, but it has the same effect of creating one, one longer block instead of two weekends in a row, two long weekends in a row.
Not to correct you, but I think, what I heard was you said MLK day is on Friday. What you meant is the end of the semester is on Friday usually.
Exactly, yes. And so I see on the twenty-three, twenty-four, the workday is the day after. So the twenty-three, twenty-four does that, but the twenty-two, twenty-three did not.
But the twenty-three, twenty-four has a wider discrepancy also.
Yeah.
I mean, if you were to fix that, you'd have to go two days after Martin Luther King and that would have that two short weeks or whatever, um, rather than.
Has the teachers, I mean, the SPA had a heavy hand in making, I mean, I shouldn't say heavy hand, but they were highly involved in this?
Yeah, we, uh, once, once drafts were made, we met with them and then went back to the admin team, went back with the principals and the, uh, union leadership all together and looking at this and working through all of these and, um, they were in full support. In fact, we, we made a few adjustments. We had a couple of different models for, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and this is the model that the teachers' union preferred, even though it wasn't, um, it wasn't the model we had planned on bringing forward. This is their preference and so we changed to this one.
I'm just concerned at the senior high with that difference because they are credit generating classes.
Do you wanna speak to that, Principal Engleman?
Yeah, it, we did talk through that. Look, the, that was important at the high school to try to get them as close as possible. It's never obviously identical, um, by day. I can't remember which semester is a little bit longer.
Spring.
Second semester.
Spring.
It's just a little bit, um, I remember Spia talking about this, that that is, that's certainly a better one to have a little bit longer due to that spring semester ends up potential weather days. It also ends up in the spring. Unfortunately, a lot of accidents is due to co-curriculars.
There's also.
One was gonna be a little longer than the other that was preferable.
And there's some testing in there that could take, would not be instructional days?
Right. For two out of them. And we have Opportunity Day in there, which is the ACT day. So it really does bring it just a little bit closer.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, second semester is three days longer and in twenty-three, twenty-four, second semester is four days longer.
And that extra day is winter break. Cause winter break is a day longer based on how Christmas. Okay. Yeah, there's quality points. I just, uh, I think based on the recommendations of the principals and the superintendent and the amount of input that went into this, which it, uh, in my experience is more than normal. It was nice to get parents and educators, uh, in a room and I was in that room to talk about, not specifically, hey, next year, what day do you wanna, but like what, what's important to you in a broad sense? And, uh, I think that could, it'll help the next couple of calendars, but that sort of information is evergreen. It's not dependent on, um, what, what day a date falls on necessarily. So. That said, are we comfortable moving ahead with this, knowing that if things change, calendars change?
What, what is the, what is the process for changes? So recommendations from Superintendent Gronseth, do we need to approve changes or are they just administratively?
If, if there were changes that were necessary, it would come back to you for a calendar adjustment and we've, we've had to do that from time to time for different reasons.
And that's the education.
Um, but considering these are approved tonight, people can kind of plan on these being the calendar.
Unless.
You know, tornadoes or pandemics or those kinds of things. I mean, at this point, who knows? Earthquake, I don't know.
Knock on wood on that.
Yeah.
Well, I think to your point of if there are tweaks, every day is precious, but okay, I know when graduation is, when my kid graduates. I know, I know when Christmas break is.
Gives you a little bit of an idea, yep.
I move we approve the, both the twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four core, uh, school calendars before us.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number three is very exciting. Treasurer Locust Guard, I don't know if you wanna speak to this one with Superintendent Gronseth, but consider approval of the twenty, twenty-one through twenty-three master agreement with the St. Peter Education Association.
Certainly Chair Leonard, I can talk to this. Uh, it was a enjoyable experience over the last few months to meet with the, uh, leadership of the St. Peter, uh, teachers and, uh, come to an agreement. As outlined in the packet, we have a two and a half, two and a half, uh, over the next two years. Uh, there's some increase in insurance and, uh, there's a ten percent increase in co-curricular in the second year. So, uh, it, the meetings went really well and I would just like to acknowledge their participation and their hard work in, and both us and Vice Chair Dixon and former director and treasurer Carlson, who, uh, sat in on, on all the negotiations. It, it went really well and I appreciate everything that happened. So I would move that we accept the, uh, twenty-one to twenty-three master agreement with the, uh, St. Peter Education Association and move it forward.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Further conversation, I have a question and, and sorry, this is, uh, I'm springing this on you, but with the co-curricular is that it's a ten percent increase, is that across the board? Coach made X, now it's ten percent?
Yes, yep. Uh, zero percent this year, ten percent next year, ten percent across the board with, whether it's coaches or assistant coaches or, uh.
Data directors or.
Yep, table workers, whoever falls into that co-curricular section of the contract.
Great, thank you.
I do wanna mention that it has been, uh, many years since there was an increase to these. These are stipend positions, they're not hourly or salary. And we were falling behind, uh, our neighbors in, in what we were paying for the same, the same activities. So this is playing a little bit of catch-up on co-curricular.
Absolutely, and, and like you said, it's a stipend and, uh, no, uh, coach or academic advisor or anyone who receives these stipends, uh, wants to think about that too hard of what an hourly rate that would be. It is not, not high.
Three cents an hour maybe.
So this is well, well deserved and, uh, excited that that's in this contract. Uh, we do have a motion and a second. Uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. That, uh, that finishes our action items for the evening. Uh, informational items, we start with enrollment options and yearly comparisons.
Yes, and right before the meeting, I did hand out some, some new copies for you. Um, there was one error on one of the pages, uh, that was included in the packet. So, um, so that's your, your most accurate document. Uh, every year, we take a look at the number of students who are leaving and where they're going, but we also take a look at the students who are choosing to come to St. Peter, um, from other districts as well. And you can see from this graph, the one that's most colorful, this is the students who are leaving St. Peter. And you can see, uh, from the yellow is other school, s- school districts. The pink is actually the ALC program in Mankato. That's something that we've talked a lot about, that, uh, we've been searching for a new space for our ALC because we are so limited in, in the number of students that we can hold. And you can see that, um, four of our students went to the Mankato ALC. And this is a topic that we'll talk more about at another time. But we're also, um, seeing kids dropping out when they're on that waiting list for ALC. So that's an important, uh, number to keep track of for sure. You can see that online, um, isn't as, as big of a number as one might expect. Charter schools, um, the New Country Charter School being the, the biggest piece of that. And then, um, our online schools again. So the, the green are public online schools and the orange are, uh, that's all they do is online. So it's not a public school system, but it's a independent, um, program. Looking at students coming into St. Peter, oh, we can see a total of two hundred and twenty-two students who are outbound from St. Peter. Coming into St. Peter from other school districts, uh, a hundred and sixty-eight. So you can see that the net, uh, is, is more going out than coming in, uh, for this year.
So on the students going out, where are the private schools, um, what's.
Uh, that is on the next, on this page.
Okay, it's just, so, so the two hundred and twenty-two isn't the total number of kids leaving, cause if we're not counting the private school on there, there would be, that's what I was trying, when I was looking at this, I was.
Right. So looking at, at the top graph on this page, you can see parochial is a hundred and fifty-one and homeschooling is twenty-seven. The reason that, the reason they're not included in these other two graphs is this information comes from our Mars system. That's the, the state system for accounting for students. And only public schools are included in that data. So when we look it up on the state's, um, the state's information, there, there aren't, uh, the students who go to private school aren't included.
And a question. And this first page is students who have been enrolled and have chosen to leave, but parochial wouldn't necessarily, they've never enrolled in St. Peter public school.
Correct.
Right, am I looking at that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the number of kids.
Well, they could have, I suppose they could have transferred. In the last, uh, couple of years, we have seen kids transfer out of public school. Um, but if they hadn't ever been here, we wouldn't.
We wouldn't count them as a leaving student because they're not, they've never been in order to leave, okay.
Do we have any idea how many kids were going from here to parochial or private schools? Or do we have any? No.
Um, I, I have that data, but I don't, I don't have it included.
Okay.
Simply because it's sometimes hard to account for those unless they tell us, we're, we don't know. Right.
Yeah.
I'm a bit surprised when I looked at the numbers, um, and looking at the senior high numbers where you had, uh, what about, uh, eighty people leave and only sixty-nine coming in? I would have thought with the new building and, uh, wide number of electives and that we would attract more people coming in than we lose. Or are the ones we're losing not interested in those options?
I can speak to this a little bit. Like Mr. Gronseth said, many of the students, um, left due to COVID, for COVID reasons purposes, um, went online, ended up staying online, going, choosing a different option. Um, they had different COVID protocols and mandates than we did. And ended up staying. Um, another thing is, um, our kids who are credit deficient and are severely credit deficient, um, and there's a, there's quite a, like Superintendent Gronseth said, there's quite a waiting list for a Rockland opportunity for kids. And so we did see, we saw, I would say probably at least ten kids leave due to that.
Well, I, I just did some quick math, which is not my strength. I should refer to, uh, Treasurer Locust Guard, who's our, uh, instantaneous math guy, but, uh, you know, if we have two hundred and twenty-two leaving, a hundred and sixty-eight coming in, that's minus, we're down fifty-four. And if I add up the number of kids in online school and the number of homeschool students, which I'm just doing this on paper and I'm not, I don't know what their motivation is, but that, that is fifty-four. And so, yeah, we would, we would be, uh, at net zero if we could get those students back. And, um, I'm probably not doing the math correctly with weighted pupil units and everything, but it's seven thousand dollars a kid, that's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. So that, um, obviously, parents need to make the, the decision that's best for their kids and we want kids to get a best, the best education they can, wherever that is. But, um, I'd like to think that could be in St. Peter and that's, that's real money and that's a few people. So hopefully.
I agree with your math, except that the two hundred and twenty-two isn't really how many students we have leaving.
Right, pro- public school, so.
Yeah, cause we really have four hundred students leaving.
Right. Right. Yeah, you're absolutely right in that. I think the caveat I would make to my answer was, we've always had the private schools, and I think, I'm glad that we have private options for people, it seems like maybe the online academies and a portion of the homeschool is a relatively new phenomenon that I hope we can, we can turn that around.
Looking at, looking at the history that's included on the bottom of this page, you can see that the last two years, the parochial schools have gained about fifty students. I would say that last year that began, speaking freely, because parochial schools were not required to follow the same protocols as the public schools in Minnesota, and some of those have continued. And then homeschool, you know, there are a lot of people who, for health reasons, family reasons, whatever reasons, did not feel comfortable coming to school and chose to go to homeschool starting last year. We see, we saw a few of those students come back with us this fall and have stayed with us. But I'd say that we would want to be really careful in saying, you know, these are trends because we also have COVID in the mix of this. We're certainly hopeful that we will rebound from these and that students will choose to come back and, you know, focus on doing the very best that we can and providing the best services that we can, so that we, they often say that the best marketing they do is to keep your students, your customers, happy, and so we want to focus on teaching and learning and providing the best education that we can.
Thank you. Any further questions on that? That was a good conversation. Transportation model.
Yes, speaking of changes made due to COVID, one of, and really the next, the next two items are very, very much connected, and so I, you know, we could talk about them together or we could talk about them separately, but with transportation, last year, we started with a two-tier transportation model. The reason we went to that was because of all the federal regulations around COVID and buses and how many students could be on a bus and how far apart they had to be, and to accommodate getting our, all of our students to school, we needed two tiers of transportation. That is something that had been talked about in the past as, as research was looked at for starting secondary students later in the morning and elementary students earlier in the morning. And so as we, as we did that, we found a lot of benefits. One of those benefits is that our students are on the bus for much shorter times. We had some students who were on the bus well over an hour, and you know, our community isn't so large that you would expect to be on the bus for an hour, and so those, those times have shortened up. We are also seeing much fewer behavior issues on buses, you know, it makes sense, they're on it for a shorter amount of time, and we don't have such a mix of ages. And so our elementary parents have been pleased that their, their younger students aren't learning life lessons on the bus, shall we say. With that, once they got to the middle school, this served as the hub, so all of the students had to get off of the bus and then get back on different buses, and so it was about a half an hour of student supervision and especially when there are changes, it was very easy to get mixed up and take a while to make that happen, so we avoid that as well. So with the benefits, we're really hoping to continue with the two-tier model. It is an investment of about thirty thousand dollars. For the past two years, that has been done with COVID relief funds. We still have COVID relief funds that could be used for that in order to continue it, at least for a short term. So that is the transportation piece of that.
Was the, so the middle school was the hub, is that twice a day or once a day?
Mr. Graff, can you help us out with that?
Are we talking prior to the two-tier?
Yes.
It was the hub just in the morning, and then that would mean our kids got to school way earlier and easier, and it caused some supervision issues, just trying to staff that early in the morning made it difficult.
How many?
Now kids show up right around eight-ten when we're ready for them. They come in, they eat their breakfast, and it's a nice calm transition into the day.
How many staff did you have to?
Um, I would, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I would guess around eight extra staff members just to supervise the lobby cafeteria area, and that means that many less during lunchtime or at the end of the day.
So that's efficiency, over twenty thousand dollars right there, so we also have to.
Those folks were still there, it's just a matter of where their duties were placed.
Yeah, their, their time is allocated down.
Now the students come in, grab their breakfast, and they go to class.
Better use of everyone's time.
Yes.
Chair Leonard. As a student who grew up riding the bus longer than an hour in the Saint Peter School District, I did learn things. From those who were older than I. I think it's a good thing that we're not teaching the youngsters those things.
So that only went one way, you didn't teach it by anything that you learned.
No, I was solely on the learning end. And I think that ultimately, the, if, you know, if we're being more efficient, that's what we want to be, and yep, it's going to cost us a little bit more to do a couple of tiers of busing, but you know, if Saint Peter Bus is willing to work with us and that's what it's costing us, it's still saving us some money in the end, and ultimately, the customers are the parents, and if they're happy because their kids are not coming home, saying things they shouldn't or learning things they shouldn't, yep, that's, I'm all for it.
And I feel like we've been bumping our heads on this barrier of tiered busing for a number of years, it always comes like, oh, we consider it, should we do it, is it going to be worth it, think about the cost and can we make it happen? I think the experience has been positive, obviously, for the last couple of years.
We worry about money, and that's what we do, and then when we're forced into something, I, I shouldn't say that, I mean, when we're maneuvered into something that's maybe a little bit outside of our comfort zone, and it works out, that's good.
But beyond the, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Beyond the money issue, the student issue, what Principal Graff said to me is the fact that the kids are getting into the education process more efficiently, that's what.
And they're not riding the bus.
Yeah, I mean, it's, right.
For an hour and a half.
And with age peers or, and I mean, it's for the kids' perspective, I think that's really huge.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, you mentioned COVID relief funding, I mean, does that kind of offset part of the cost for this year, and then that probably is gone after this academic year?
No, it is, it's covered this year, and we have, those funds are available to us through September of twenty-four, depending on how, how we choose to use those.
Sure, thanks.
So Principal Ingledinger, if I'm correct, and I live this as a parent of high school students, and in addition to less time on the bus and separate and all of that, me thinking of trying to get my kids up an hour earlier this year is rough, so with all of this, we have a later start at the high school, I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, I can speak to that, it's something that we've been interested in trying to figure out for a very long time. Obviously, there's many studies out there that show that for the high school, high school clients that we have, actually, a perfect, based on, based on their sleep patterns and their brains, nine, nine AM would be a perfect start. We were bucking that whole trend and starting their day at seven-fifty. Just anecdotally, we've noticed a big difference in attendance first period, it, it, like Mr. Graff said, for some reason, the start of that day is a little bit more smooth, and hopefully easier to get your kids out of bed.
It is.
One, one drawback, I mean, just to be perfectly honest, is that going later in the day, it does make a difference for co-curriculars, so those fourth block classes do take a little bit more of a hit.
They're giving a ten percent raise, so they should be on here.
Not the fourth block.
It's the co-curricular, you gotta move. Why would you say that? Well, that's what I meant. They know.
As I mentioned, the transportation item and the school schedules are, they're so connected here, we've kind of started on that.
Oh, sorry, I jumped the gun.
No, 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 you're, they are totally connected, one causes the other. And so on that, on that same thought of pros and cons, the admin team got together and really worked through what are the pros and cons of this, what are the pros and cons of these schedules, and when we were talking about pros, all of the principals had things that they were adding to the, the mix. When it came to, to pointing out the challenges, the fourth, fourth block attendance due to co-curriculars was one. There were some issues with availability of staff for a staff meeting at the middle school, but, and the, the cost of approximately thirty thousand dollars were the things that were up against, you know, when it was a whole list of benefits because of it. And so the schedules are, are as laid out, these are the same schedules that we have this year as far as start and end times, and then the other piece of this is connected to the block schedules. And there are things that we did because of COVID, changes that we made because of COVID, that we've seen a lot of benefit from and want to continue, you know? There were some positives that came from it, and sometimes it takes something like this to really give us a nudge in that direction. Certainly, we've seen a lot of growth in how we use technology in our district, and it has forced us to use, try some things with our schedules that have been beneficial. And so I'd like Principal Ingledinger and Principal Graff to share a bit about our plans for the block schedules in bold.
All right, so just a quick trip down memory lane, so in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, if you remember, the middle school adopted a block schedule. We went from an eight-period day, which was just so mechanical, four to two-minute periods, move, 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 to a, to an alternating block, so A-day, B-day. It was the greatest thing in the world. And then COVID hit, and in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we were preparing for hybrid learning, and in hybrid learning, when you're at school every other day, an alternating block doesn't work because you're going to miss half your classes. So then we were forced to go to a quarter block, where kids went to the same four classes for a quarter and then switched, and then went back to those same classes the next quarter. That's what we kept for this year too, just with the uncertainty of what this year would bring, and we have found it to be even better than the alternating block. With a quarter block, our students don't have the issue of not having English or math class for a full year like they might end up with with a semester block, but it allows our teachers and our students to focus on four classes for a whole quarter straight. With that alternating block, essentially, kids still had eight classes and teachers still had two preps that they were bouncing back and forth through every other day. So given that information, we do hope to continue with the quarter block schedule at the middle school for next year also.
Questions?
Sounds fabulous. Good work. I was just thinking, it was a trip down memory lane or a little history lesson about the block schedule at the high school, I just have notes for myself and it's, and I have here the early nineteen nineties, and, but kids today call the eighties and nineties the late nineteen hundreds. I know, ouch is right. Yeah, yeah. The block schedule at the high school has, has kind of a long history, and, and we've gone in and out of a, of a true block now just twice. So when we moved to the block in the late nineteen hundreds, we, we were a solid block both middle and high school. Eventually, the middle school moved to the crazy eight-period day, and as did at the high school, our math and world language departments also moved to what we referred to as a modified block then, as skinnyed classes, so the one course lasted all year, and we're half the length of time, obviously, as a block class. Every time we do a master schedule review, it's something that, that I personally and many of the staff were very interested in going back to a solid block. There are pros and cons, obviously, to, to both of them, but COVID has given us an opportunity to try it, and we did that, Mr. Graff explained, obviously, the, the trick to doing hybrid and distance and in-person and all of that made, made it pretty much impossible to do that modified block during COVID. We also, last year, wanted to avoid as many, we want, we were attempting to keep kids mostly in a smaller number of pods throughout their day, so, so limiting it to block, kids only have either four classes one semester and three the other. So that did eliminate a lot of transition time at the high school. We also were forced, unfortunately, to eliminate Saints' time, which had become a, a really popular and, for the most part, used appropriately by kids, but that was, that's a flexible, a flex twenty-minute time between two of those blocks. That, that was also eliminated for last year and this year, aside from our homerooms on Wednesdays. We hope, the hope is that that will be back next year. That was, that was also eliminated due to COVID because a flex block means that kids are, many kids are just hanging out, and so we were really trying to avoid that, and I, I hope to bring that back next year. We have not done registration yet, and so the conversation on continuing on with the full, with the true block schedule is still ongoing, but, but feedback that we've gathered so far is mostly positive. The pros for, I'll, I'll start with the cons, they're maybe a little bit easier to understand. In the, in the math and world language world, to go, to have a gap, say, from having a first semester math class year one and a second semester math class year two, that's a, that's a big gap, and so, so people are worried about a learning loss and the potential for having to do, use a significant amount of time to reteach. Those are things that hopefully through scheduling will be mostly avoided for kids, hopefully, they would not have more than one semester. Hopefully, they would not have more than one semester off from those courses. Not that that can be eliminated entirely. Teachers do report that while there's a deeper understanding of concepts, obviously, they're, they're unable to get through quite as much of the curriculum as they would if they, if it was a full-year course. You simply can't, can't stand in front of kids and deliver bell-to-bell in, for ninety minutes. You have to change things up just a little bit more, so, and give kids more time to, more times, more time to process. Another con, which I almost hate bringing up because it shouldn't drive our decisions, but of the testing schedule. MCAs are in the spring, ACT is in the spring. If you haven't, if you're not still continuing on in some of those courses, it can, you might need a little bit more test prep before some of those classes. But we are finding, surprisingly, even the, the staff, who, I wouldn't, I would not say that they begrudgingly went to the, went back to the block due to COVID. They knew it was the best thing to do at the time. They've really mostly changed their tune on it and have really appreciated the time to deliver those concepts and see kids, get them, understand, understand those concepts to a, to a different level. And truth be told, that one of the main reasons that, from the administration and our counseling office, is that more kids are able to get more of the classes that they want. Trying to schedule a modified block is, is insane. Without getting too, too deep into it, if a kid wants, is a, is a band kid, not a choir kid, and has a skinnied math class and wants to be in Spanish two, things get impossible because you have to have a, a skinnied class next backed up to another skinnied class. So it was leading to a lot of scheduling conflicts for kids not able to take the classes that they, that they wanted most. And that's a, that's a huge reason that I'm very interested in continuing with the solid block. Another, another interesting pro that we've gathered from other districts who have all block is, so there, there could be that, that gap in your, in, say, your, in math. What they've found is that more kids double down on, double down on those classes. You could take, if you're a math kid, you could double down and get through our four years of math as quickly as you wanted to with the opportunity to move on to more upper-level classes, potentially PSEO, faster that you get through what the high school has, has to offer. They actually saw their, their math, their math enrollments in their math electives jump. And it also might give us more of an opportunity to look at things like geometry and construction, which a couple of our teachers have gone through training for applied math classes. That would make that a little bit easier.
So are the music classes now just strictly block?
No, they're not. Those are the only two, and they're opposite each other. So, so kids who are in band and choir, those are bumped up against each other, or that is their, that's their one study hall all year.
If you did an elective Bruce Springsteen concert, the class would still be a block.
So are they still the first block, or have you moved those to the fourth block?
No, first block. But there are two, so depending on your grade level, we have nine and ten.
Yeah. I mean, if you've got a number of kids that only are taking one music and have a study hall opposite it, if it happened to be the last forty-five minutes of the day, that would not have the impact with extracurriculars.
So if your kid isn't in band or choir, is there no study hall then?
No, every, so a student is considered full-time at seven credits a year.
Okay.
So if you're not in band or choir, you'd have a block of a study hall, one semester.
I gotcha.
And hopefully, it's a semester you have all your tough classes.
Right.
Gotcha.
So our plan is to move forward with the two-tiered scheduling, the daily schedule as they're laid out, and moving forward with the block scenarios that, that you heard about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports.
Just, I'm so busy tonight. Surprisingly, these guys trusted me to deliver the Prince, the building reports. With Ative not being here and Darren not being here, I might just wing it on the early childhood and north.
Just to say that you weren't here last time, I don't think, so.
I'm always watching, though. They know that.
Oh, okay.
I will also, I would also like to report, you know, we like to, we like to joke amongst each other about who goes on and on the longest on these things. Even in writing, it's Doherty. So.
We'll see.
You're off to an interesting start.
In early childhood, their winter and spring session of early childhood family education starts next week. They have their next early childhood screening coming up soon on February third. And they are planning their programming for fall 2022, and will be holding their school readiness open house the evening of February seventeenth. And at that, families will be able to tour the early childhood center and visit with their teachers about program offerings. At South, they are in the process of completing their fast assessments for both reading and math, and are looking forward to reviewing the results, which should be compiled within the next week. Their first semester PBIS celebration was delayed by the Flex Learning Day, but they quickly transitioned it to the first day of the second semester and had a PJ and popcorn day. In our, in their top twenty social emotional program, we are focusing, they are focusing on their EQ, which is their emotional intelligence. They're learning how they can build on personal strengths to develop star qualities. Hang on, at North Elementary, some, no. Some exciting academic progress to report with our winter reading and math screening scores. Students are approximately ten percentage points above their benchmark scores as compared to last year. With the Flex Learning Day last Thursday, they had planned passion projects that had to be rescheduled to January twenty-eighth. Students signed up for a one-hour lesson taught by teachers, paras, and clerical staff. Mr. Doherty will be taking a group of students to the high school to learn about CTE topics with Mr. Reeser and Mr. Robinson. Homeroom teachers are also starting another round of junior achievement with kids. Students will learn more about financial literacy, work and career readiness, and entrepreneurship. And this program is free, and local volunteers teach the lessons. At the middle school, they had an end-of-quarter celebration day, which was missed due to last, last week's Flex Learning Day, and it was rescheduled for Friday, January twenty-eighth. And they have an update on some Gestavis partnerships. They're currently hosting seven students for their J-term teacher placements. J-term human development students presented in eighth-grade advisories this week. Four students currently serve as part-time paras. And in February, they will be hosting students for Gestavis's Wednesdays in the workplace. At the high school, Anna Klett was named the Lions Club Student of the Month. Her parents are Joe and Kathy Klett. It's, testing season is coming up, so on everybody's radar should be Opportunity Day, which is March eighth. And on that day, we give the pre-ACT to sophomores, the ACT or the ASVAB for juniors, and seniors have an opportunity to do job shadowing. And ninth graders this year will likely have a Flex Learning Day due to campuses not wanting large numbers of students touring, so I, I don't know why.
Good, Charlie.
Yep, come on.
I'll give a tour.
The, our PBIS team is bringing back the Shining Saints breakfast, which was an opportunity to recognize kids for just, who are simply doing the right thing, usually in the classroom and around the school building. So we're excited to have that come back again. The BLT is working hard on, as I stated last time, the, kids are, were having a really hard time transitioning back into, into school and remembering how to do school. We thought about that a lot with our ninth graders because, you know, turns out that middle school is really important to develop some of those school skills. And, and they missed a year and a half of, of a really important developmental part of their schooling. So, so we're, we're looking next year to bring, bring in more of a, of a really rigorous transition program for our ninth graders. So that's what the, that's what our BLT is busy researching and looking at. In our alternative programs, enrollment is now open for the second session of high school credit recovery. And the ALC governing board is meeting tomorrow, and they just, will be discussing future collaboration for night school and summer school and our current Rock Bend ALC. We, as you know, continue to explore options for additional space for Rock Bend expansion. And like other buildings, they are also working to accommodate increasing rates of absenteeism at Rock Bend and Ashua Learning Academy due to illness. But teachers are working very hard to continue providing learning opportunities for students when they're unable to be in school. Questions? If you can make something up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, as you've heard already, we've begun the second semester this week, and there is, our schools are always, always busy, always buzzing with activity. It's hard to believe, though, that half the year is already gone. It's also the time of year that we really dig into planning for next year. You heard some of that. The core selectives and registrations right around the corner. We really start looking at budgets and thinking about legislative sessions and the changes that might be happening there, and what we might be advocating for at the Capitol. This year, we are including in our planning for next year a strategic planning process. And we are going to be having opportunities for staff and parents and community members to join in that conversation. It's gonna be an opportunity to reflect on the past couple of years, but also to, to talk about what's working, what we can improve on, and really set the priorities and the direction for, for the next five years. So all of our staff are going to be participating through building meetings. And then we will have sessions for parents in the schools and for community members. There'll be some in the community center. We plan on having a session in Spanish and in Somali as well. We also plan to have some kind of online platform for people to provide their input if they're not able to or not comfortable coming to, to a meeting. And of course, COVID is going to make some determination in, in how all of that works as well. So be watching for opportunities to be involved in that in the next few weeks. We'll be publishing a schedule of, of events. Hopefully, trying to kind of wait out this, this peak of COVID. Regarding COVID, we continue to see high community spread, especially with the Omicron. Did I say that right?
Omicron.
Omicron, thank you. Omicron variant. As you know, last week, we took a, a Flex Learning Day on Thursday to create a five-day separation. When we came back on Tuesday, our numbers were lower than they had been when we left. Wednesday, the day before that Flex Learning Day, seemed like our phone was ringing off the hook and our email kept coming. We had over twenty cases reported that day, and that wasn't the end of it. It kind of kept growing, and so we thought it would be important to take a pause, and it did work somewhat. I will say that today, our numbers are, are climbing again, and they are increasing. Right now, we have forty-six positive cases among students. Twenty-seven of those between the middle and high school. We currently have nine staff members, kind of spread across all of our buildings and programs. As I mentioned, the cases are predicted to peak within the next couple of weeks. And we've received a, a couple of questions about distance learning. The media had reached out about distance learning when we took the Flex Day, wondering if that was our plan to go back to distance learning. I can share that, that is not what we hope to do. It's not what we want to do. We've, we've come a long way since the beginning of COVID and are more prepared to take a targeted approach to that. So if we see a high number of cases in a classroom or in a certain grade or a, a school, we, we would look at transitioning a class or a grade level or just those being affected with high numbers of cases, rather than going to a decision for the whole system based on, on what might be hotspots. Now, if it is everybody, then it's everybody, right? And those decisions are, are mainly based on our ability to provide services based on the number of staff that we have. Or if we have a, a large number of students, then it would be more effective, more efficient to go online with a smaller group, then we would look at doing that. But we don't have any current plans for doing that. I can tell you that right now, this week, the hotspot is early childhood because our early childhood programs don't always mask. We do have some students that mask and some that don't, especially in our High Meets early childhood programs. And we have had several, several staff members, both teachers, paraprofessionals, and students testing positive in those programs, and so we have a, a number of them that are down to a, a few kids in those classes. And we've been continuing to provide services as best we can, but that is an area where we are seeing higher numbers right now. The best defense continues to be a layered approach to mitigation. We continue to keep those air handlers running and doing our cleaning, requiring masks for students in kindergarten through grade eight. We really hope that people are testing regularly. We encourage them to go and get vaccinated. When it's your time to get boosted, go and get boosted. And probably most importantly, stay home when you're not feeling well. I, I can't tell you how many times we've heard, "I just thought I had a little cold," or, you know, "It's just a little tickle in my throat." And then in a day or two, turns into more symptoms in a positive test. But in the meantime, a lot more people have, have been exposed. And what we, what we know is this variant is, is spread more quickly. Even though the symptoms for most have thankfully been mild, we, we just don't know who's going to be affected more severely or when that's gonna happen. So we really want to keep everyone's safety in mind and ask that people stay home when they're not feeling well, get tested. And I, I wanna remind everyone that the federal government is now giving out four free tests to every home in America is eligible. The website is covidtest.gov. And it's a very easy, two or three questions that you answer. And it's a very easy two or three questions that you answer. Starting as early as next week, they'll also be providing N95 masks. It hasn't been announced where those are going to be available locally, but it's going to most likely be the sites that are providing testing will be, will have those available. There was some talk that it might be on the same website that you order those tests, so you could check that again, that website again, covidtests.gov. I also want to remind everyone that COVID tests are also available in the health offices of our schools. I know that they have become quite difficult to find. School does have a supply of them to provide to students upon request. We are working with Heather and with Rachel to update our COVID page on the website with new information, with the changes in CDC guidance, and making sure that we have that in an accessible way for all of our families. Thank you, Heather, for working on that. Finally, I want to thank our staff for continuing to focus on students and education. You heard lots of examples of that tonight during our conversations. And while there's a lot going on in the world, our students continue their educational journeys, and our staff is doing everything that they can to provide a positive learning environment for our kids and keeping them on track, getting them back on track. We have great news from North with a 10% increase in those scores compared to last year, which is good news. And we'd like to celebrate our staff every day, but next week is Paraprofessional Recognition Week, and so we want to give them a special shout-out and recognize that the work that they do every day is so important to the success of our students, especially those who most need that additional support. So we appreciate their efforts and their dedication to our students and our schools. Please take some time next week to share your appreciation for all of our paraprofessionals. So ends my report.
Thank you.
Sure. During the MSBA conference this past, were we a week, two weeks, last week? Anyway, I thought it was really nice. We got to spend some time together as a board and to connect. It's been a hard year and a half, two years, and we had some great conversations, and I was just thankful for that time, so, thank you all.
Thank you. Phil?
Also during the convention, I went to the study session that was put on by MSBA's Government Relations Crew, lobbyists. And they have a few general goals that they are looking at addressing during the legislative session. Provide full funding for special education obligations, really centering on the cross-subsidy. And it's interesting, I need to check with you, Superintendent Gradsen, about where St. Peter stands at this? Because I noticed in the sheet that they handed out, they said a lot of school districts operating referendum revenue equals what they're spending on cross, you know, cross subsidies for special ed. Well, we're nowhere near, if this report's right. I don't know if they have the new referendum included or not, but...
I'd love to see it.
So that was one goal, provide full funding for English learner requirements, fully equalize property tax levies and index to inflation, provide funding for facility improvements, address the critical staffing shortage, bus drivers, nurses, paraprofessionals, substitute teachers, were all mentioned, increase access and support to mental health services, allow school boards the authority and flexibility to redesign schools for the future, and maintain local decision-making and resist any new unfunded mandates. So those are kind of the areas that they will be focusing on. This is the bonding session, right? So the budget has really been set. So even though we have that $7 million surplus supposedly, don't look for any increase in the basic formula. That's kind of the message. So I will get signed up to get the weekly emails from MSBA, and I will pass along pertinent facts as they appear.
Thank you.
This is pre-increase.
That's what I thought maybe.
It's still not even.
No, but I mean, we had probably one of the largest differences prior to that.
Great, thank you.
Ah, this is the 20th of January, and I feel like I've hit the deck running. We've had many committee meetings, and I got a chance to meet my colleagues and get some input and lots of questions. You guys have all been really respectful in answering my questions, and it's just an honor to be here, and I'm looking forward to a good year.
Just keep on, keep it on, that's what I'm doing.
Sounds good. I don't have anything.
Also do not have anything.
Well, thanks, everybody. Our upcoming meetings of the school board, we have a study session Monday, February 7th, at 6:30 PM in the media center of the middle school. We have an education committee on February 8th at 1:00 PM in the middle school conference room. And our regular board meeting is Thursday, February 24th at 6:30 PM back here in the governor's room. So with that, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.